Good evening, this is the August 26, 2019, meeting of the Matthews Board of Commissioners. The commission has been in meeting since 5:30, took a brief recess to come out to the meeting room. So, welcome this evening, thank you for being here. Tonight, we have a safety minute, and Mr. Blodgett has volunteered to give that, and I'm excited because I've been doing this now for nineteen months, and I'm excited somebody has stepped up to help out.
It's my honor, Mr. Mayor. So, one of the things is, we do have a defibrillator, AED, in the back, if somebody needs that. The exits are, the stairs are, you probably came in the ones on the right back there, and then there's stairs to the back, so please remember that. Also, if you can make sure your aisleways are clear of debris, so that if somebody needs to get out, you can. Is that what you said?
That's good.
Okay. So, the other thing I wanted to tell everybody, and the staff went through a four-hour training about an active shooter, and that's just kind of the reality of where we're at. We plan on doing abbreviated version to the board, and one of our employees did, they did a great job, but the acronym is ADD, which is Avoid, Deny, and Then Defend. So, one of the things I just wanted to tell this group about, Avoid. Apparently, in these situations, it is so astounding when something like this happens that people sit there, because their brains can't process, like, this is crazy, this can't be happening. So, I guess what I would say to this group is, be prepared, if you have to act, act as quickly as possible, and that's the avoid, and we have exits all over this building. And then, Deny, if something happened, you can always block your doors, turn off your lights, be quiet, that kind of thing. And then, the last thing is, if you have to defend yourself or your cohorts, they are training that, too. So, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next item is the invocation. I'd like to have us take a moment of silence as a group, and no particular item to bring up, but please just take about fifteen, twenty seconds. All right, thank you. Next item is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, the next thing we have is five photo contest winners, and we have them with us this evening, and we're going to show their photos up on the screen. Laura, if we can dim the lights, that'd be great. Yes, come on up. All of you, all five of you. Couple on this side, couple on this side. Okay, so, the first one we have is a category of celebrations/events, and Kevin McCarthy won this for his photo helicopter ride fund. Kevin, Kevin, you're Kevin. Father and daughter enjoying a helicopter ride during Beach Fest earlier this year. Kevin is a retired public relations professional, and says he now has plenty of time to pursue his love of photography. So, congratulations, thank you very much. Okay, our next category is nature, parks, and trails, and the winning photo is Autumn at Squirrel Lake by Marjorie Meza. Marjorie? It really captures the beauty of Squirrel Lake Park, a very, very nice park in our community. Marjorie says she is grateful that she lives nearby and gets to enjoy this beautifully-kept natural space offer. So, congratulations, and thank you. Number two and number three don't want to come apart. There we go. All right. So, the next category is the people category, and if you don't know where this is, it's in the back parking lot on the wall, and a lot of people don't know that those books are painted on the wall, and you say something to them, and then they start seeing them all the time, so it's pretty fascinating. So, the winner of the people category is Song Johns. Congratulations, and the photo is Tiny Bookworm. Is that your son? Okay, okay.
That's cool.
All right. Song took this photo at the mural behind the building we're in right now. The boy in the picture loves reading, and that inspired the idea of this shot. Song owns her own photography business, Blooming Dreams Photography. Congratulations. Okay, the next one is streetscapes, town landmarks category, and this one I thought was just amazing. This is like a once-in-a-lifetime-type shot. The winning photo is Mourning Over Matthews by Chris Borowick. This photo was captured in the early morning hours near Chris's home in Windrow. Chris said, once he saw the glowing sky, he ran for his camera and took the photo from his front porch, and congratulations, Chris. That's a beautiful picture. So, now, we get to the last one. If I can hang on to the paper. And Nadia Maximov, and that's you, right? Okay, lastly, the winner in the youth category is Nadia Maximov with this photo taken on Trade Street called Time to Reflect. Nadia said the picture reflects a simpler time, something that Matthews still offers today. Nadia is fourteen years old and a ninth grader at East Mecklenburg High School, and it looks to me like you may have a future in photography. So, congratulations. So, why don't we gather up here? Okay, the next item we have is items to be added to the agenda. Mr. Manager, do we have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have public comment. We had two individuals sign up. Troy Foltz, if you'll please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yes, that podium, thank you.
Good evening, Councilman, my name is Troy Foltz. I live 15604 Country Lake Drive in Pineville, North Carolina. I am here representing the Complete Count Committee for the U.S. 2020 Census that will take place, starting around mid-March of 2020, with a date for the response as of April 1st, so where everybody resides as of April 1, 2020. I'm here to ask the council and the towns help in putting forth a member to the Complete Count Committee for Charlotte Mecklenburg County, to instill, you know, in the town of Matthews, the work that we're doing at the county level, with leaders across the county and multiple organizations, to craft language and programs to push out to the individual town levels, and where we really need to count individuals, and make sure that everybody is counted in the 2020 Census. So, as a part of that effort, we would need somebody that has connections to the Matthews community, that can take the key messaging back to the constituents here in the town of Matthews, and make sure that it's the key individuals that can get the message to the appropriate folks. As we all know from the news, regardless of your political lean, there's been a lot of spin around the citizenship question, which is deterring a lot of the population from responding, or saying that they're going to respond to the 2020 Census, which, as we all know, is not the right answer, as a lot rides on the response rate from the 2020 Census, and drives a lot of the revenue that comes to the town from the federal level, as well as the representation of Matthews at the state and federal level. So, I have some information sheets here, and some signup sheets, that if anybody would like to get involved, they can reach out to me directly at census@pinevillenc.gov, and I can get them hooked into the Mecklenburg Complete Count Committee. We meet once a month in locations around the county, not a heavy lift by any stretch of the imagination, and really, they'd be joining at the right time. We've already done the legwork of, you know, learning from the Census folks on how to deliver, and the importance, so we're at the point where it's building the key messaging, and developing the programs to get the message out to all of Mecklenburg County. So, I can leave the copy with the ma'am here at the end of the counter, and, you know, if anybody wants to fill out the form, unfortunately, it's not online yet, but we can go old-school and sign, and scan, and email if you wish, or just send me an email at the email that I provided, that I'd like to get involved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
The next speaker is Dave Bland.
I'm Dave Bland, I live at 224 Sardis Grove Lane. I wanted to bring an idea that I had to the town council about something we did years ago, and I wanted to see if, I heard, I guess I read what y'all were talking about tonight, about money from folks, from the Republicans coming to town, wanting to make a difference, make something look nice around town, and I thought about how we had been able to get up with the good folks at Duke Energy, and were able to take all the power lines that used to be over all the, well, the picture that we saw just a moment ago, the young lady had done, about, there used to be power lines all the way there, which were really ugly, they took them down and put them underground, and it's just really made that stretch of, between John Street and up near where Christopher's is, just so much more attractive, and we were able to get the decorative lightings and stuff. I thought maybe if there's a little bit of extra money that they want to help beautify the town, that would be a thing that we could maybe extend that down to where the, you know, the fire department is on one end, and stretch it down to maybe where the Walgreens and those areas, those areas that have been developed since way back twenty-five years ago, and have, you know, helped bring them in as part of the, I guess, the downtown area of Matthews, and I think it would help beautify the whole county, and maybe if we get Duke Energy and our good friends in the Republican Party to chip in a little money, that we might really make a difference here in Matthews. So, I thought I'd share that idea with you folks, and see where we can get done with it. So, that's what, maybe it's a good idea, maybe not, but hey, that's for you guys to decide. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, the next item is reports from advisory boards and committees. Item 8A is Economic Development Advisory Committee, so those draft minutes are available on the agenda. Next item is the consent agenda, items A through D5. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, item 8A, or rather, 9A through 9D5.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Query. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is unfinished business. First item, 10A, is consider revised public art policy, and Corey King is with us this evening to discuss that.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Board. Tonight, just talking about public art, revisiting a conversation we had a couple of weeks ago, and following up with more information. One of the asks was to bring back, or I guess, research, the original information from the, say, the conception of the mural art program. We did find some information. A lot of it was, call it the objectives, pretty philosophical about what we wanted the mural art program to be, and what it would look like. I think we've stayed true to those objectives to date. One piece of information we could not find was, say, this original list of locations, but if you scroll down, ah, there we go. We did, well, we have worked with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and, scroll down a little bit further, have a list of potential locations. Many of these spaces are public property, but a lot of them are also private, so potential in this sense would also have to accompany permission from the property owners. But I did think it was also valuable to see a list of the existing pieces that we have installed. Scroll back. Ah, the other, yes. All right. And so, you see what we have installed to date, ten sculptures, and nine, I put the asterisk on nine because the one will be going up tomorrow, currently in place, and I just did think that was valuable to show. At our August meeting, we just had with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we did take that as an opportunity to gather some more information. One of the asks, or part of the conversation at the last meeting, was to bring back ideas for themes for public art. Staff did make a targeted, or, well, took a targeted approach to promoting the meeting, and hoping to get, I guess, more participation. In this case, citizens that attended were, well, say that were not part of the advisory committee, were roughly two, but in that meeting, it was just a good discussion. The citizens that attended, they were active and were very willing to participate, but with that, it was a pretty broad spectrum of potential ideas for themes in Matthews. So, the information we gathered, really could not pull together one, what we would call consensus, well, consensus on any one theme for Matthews. I'm not sure if it was an idea, maybe we would see that, it's like a B, would be something that, it was just prevalent throughout, you know, conversation, that we just didn't find that. Staff's opinion is, maybe we take a more broad approach to what we say target, as far as different pieces of art in their specific locations. I guess the last piece I wanted to talk about tonight was revisiting the procedures that we have in place, or potential procedures to approving public art. I do think the process we have in place is pretty efficient. I think that one, well, one piece of feedback that I got from the board was a desire to have a more broad, say, level of input from citizens, and I think what we've done here in this process is to identify those benchmarks, as far as where we are in the process, to where we, again, make that targeted promotion of the meetings, encourage a lot more voices in the room as we discuss ideas, than also looking at different versions, illustrations of potential art, before we bring it to the board, and also, at the same time, keep the board more involved throughout the process, as we sort of move through the steps. I guess I could describe the, I guess, go back through the process that I sort of outlined at the last meeting, I guess, let me know if you want me to sort of dive back into it, Well, I will talk through it.
Pardon me?
Well, I was sort of asking, you want me to sort of talk through what the steps are, or?
Can I ask a question? Okay, let's have a question, then we can...
Thank you, Mayor. Corey, I'm seeing two documents, one that we discussed at our last meeting, which is requirements to install a mural if you receive funding from the town.
Correct.
And this document is if you want to put a mural up, or install a mural, period. Do these two, are these intended to be two separate documents, or is there an intention to form them into one document? And I guess my final question, as a part of that, is, could this all be simplified to just adding a sentence to the end of the existing document that says, Town Board to have final approval or vote on mural before its installation?
Yeah, I included that first document just to show, that was the original piece of literature I found, and I just simply included that just to sort of demonstrate the research we did. The second piece...
So, you're speaking of page two of your memo?
Page two. Page two is simply to just show the original document, and sort of what those objectives were laid out back in 2012, or 11, or whatever year that was. The other piece really just gives a step-by-step outline of when the advisory committee, or what staff and the advisory committee will do, in terms of, what I think is most importantly, how we are going to make sure we market the meetings, encourage more participation from citizens, to sort of have their voice at the beginning, and then in the middle, and at the same time, show where we're sharing this information with the board throughout the process also.
Ask a quick question. Go ahead and ask.
Okay. Mr. Buckley?
Well, quick question. Corey, you said that murals on private property, we would still have to come before the board for approval?
If it were going to be a part of the town's mural art program, where we were going to participate.
Where they're receiving funds from the town?
Correct.
Oh, okay. That's all I wanted to clarify.
But for clarity, anybody who wants to put a mural up, it would be the equivalent of the color they want to paint their house, and they can put it up, as long as it doesn't violate any other ordinances of vulgarity, or anything with signage, et cetera. Okay, all right. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Corey, I just have one small detail. Under mural design requirements, it reads, no person shall paint a wall mural on the exterior, so, so on and so forth. I would just maybe consider, instead of the word paint, would be apply or install, because so many of these murals nowadays are really a transfer process of a film, correct?
That is true.
So, I mean, there's many different ways of putting a mural up, but rather than paint, no person shall paint, you could just substitute apply or install on that. Just a small technicality, that's all I had. I can't wait to see the other one go up. I think it's going up this week.
It is.
Let me hopefully clarify, so, I think at the last board meeting, the board said, somebody asked a question about what were the old requirements. So, Corey, that first, that first, page two, shows the old requirements.
Correct.
And my guess is, Charlie, you'd probably say that the U.S. Supreme Court has stepped in, probably since then, and we have more higher regulations, so that's what the previous question was about, was private property, as long as you're not violating any of the ordinances, you can put up a mural. We recognize that, we respect that, and so, thank you. So, here is what we have before y'all tonight, and the recommendation is to approve it. Charlie, I mean, Corey, is that where we're getting to?
It is, and I'll say the difference here is, these steps are sort of outlining what staff and the advisory committee plan to do in terms of the public meetings, or the conversations where we attempt to make a recommendation, or form a recommendation to then bring to the board.
Okay, Mr. Higdon?
Well, I really appreciate the clarification, because I wasn't sure which was the old and which was the new. The old is so ambiguous and vague, I don't see how it could ever be enforced, you know, so I think that the new is much improved. The one thing that I mentioned last time, that I noticed here on the new portion, was it says that, somewhere in here, that it can't advertise anything specifically to be sold, and we had spoke of some of the towns in North Carolina and other areas having vintage Coca-Cola signs and things like that. Would those be forbidden by this policy?
I mean, it'd be, I guess, up to evaluation by our planning department, and, well, planning board, if it falls into the sign category, I guess that'd be something to consider. It really would just depend on the art.
That would be something, I think, you know, Coca-Cola would be something iconic, so it's, you know...
I'm not saying it'd be a great thing to do, but I would hate to forbid it from everybody, or an old seed package or something, maybe the seeds are still being sold, but it's just something iconic that looks nice, that we might want to consider.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Go back to my previous question, I'm still confused. Is there a separate, different document that has to do with the installation of murals if you receive town funds? Or is that being superseded by this document?
No, the, what you see here is what we're calling the new, in my opinion, was not a part of, or was almost a unwritten sort of process that we just sort of followed. The original one is still what is in place. Page two is just the signature document that I didn't include here, and it's still what we hand to the property owner, then they return before we even, you know, take the next step to proceed with the art. So, I guess, in that sense, what you see is, as page two is in place as the document, and the explanation of the program.
I'm sorry, what is page two? Can you show us what page two is?
Scroll back up.
It's page two of this document.
There. And again...
Yes. If I might continue, I really dislike this document. It's so ambiguous. I mean, number one, the proposed wall mural should be well-integrated. Who determines that? Proposed wall mural by its design, scale, construction, location, shall not have a substantial adverse effect. I mean, who decides these things? These are really ambiguous rules. It shall be of exceptional design quality, enhance the overall development and appearance. I mean, this seems so impossibly subjective, appropriate for the outdoor locale, you know. How do you ever determine if that's...
This is going away.
No, he said that we're still going to sign this. This is the document you have to sign if you want a mural.
Yeah, I did not attempt to recreate this. Really, what I did was sort of write down the steps that, to date, were not sort of housed anywhere. What you see as the new information, it's not really spelled out in here, as far as the process that the staff and the advisory committee sort of takes.
Let me ask a question. How can you, if someone is privately putting up a mural, how can page two apply to anything that they're doing?
If they're doing it on their own, then they follow whatever steps necessary, work with planning department, or if it's even necessary for the town to be involved. This is if they would like to participate, or if the town would participate in the installation of the mural.
So, let me see if we can move the ball forward. So, it sounds like this one, there are some concerns about the vagueness of it, and the difficulties of it, but what's important from a staff standpoint is the process that y'all want to go through to get public input, you know, check in with the advisory board, get public input, check in with the town board, you know, make sure nobody's getting ahead of anybody else, so my suggestion would be, if the board wants to do this, is to go to page seven, Maureen, and adopt seven, and then, Corey, if you want to work on something that helps somebody that's interested in doing a mural, and watch towns' funds, as long as they understand the procedures... doing a mural and watch towns' funds, as long as they understand the procedures, we could just, you know, we could craft it so it's just focused on this. It sounds like the board's just getting confused about this other document that feels like it's separate and apart from this public art installation procedures. Does that make sense?
Yes, so I apologize. I mean, this is, call it an internal document. This is what staff and the advisory committee sort of worked through. These are our internal steps. The form, call it page two, is really what is handed to the property owner, what sort of lays out what is required as far as the mural itself. I'm really focusing on the internal procedures to work through, creating the idea and holding the meetings, following up with the board and then following back up with, you know, I guess any revisions that need to be made to the art before it's eventually brought to the board for approval.
Okay, and the only problem that I'm having is that this seems prescriptive and you've got to sign it. So it's not clear that you're saying this applies when you're getting town funds to do the mural.
Gotcha.
That's what's missing in this. Because you read through it and it's like, anybody who wants to put a mural up has to go per this prescribed procedure.
Gotcha.
And it doesn't fit what we've been hearing about the Supreme Court ruling, so.
We can certainly make that more clear.
Mr. Higginson?
Yeah, one other thing on the page two, I guess, is it says it shall not have an adverse effect on the abutting property, which sounds to me like almost anyone could shut down the mural being put up if they don't like it because they live near it. I don't think that's good policy.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Just a comment, yeah.
Additionally, to the Supreme Court case that was recent, if you recall the Gilbert case, the Reade versus Towne and Gilbert about five years ago that affected every single sign ordinance in the country, those same ideas dealing with First Amendment rights and content-based decisions, even if they're just asking for money, content-based decisions could come back and be problematic for the town as being denied First Amendment rights, even if they're asking for public funds. It's just like asking access to the town's links on our webpage, that's not correct word, but it's same as getting a link, getting money or getting a link, it's still you can't make a content base. You've got to be real careful with that. So we need to take a look at that old policy and work on that a little bit.
Mr. Min?
On the last page, number four of the new document, I'd like to see this board engaged earlier in the process instead of at the very end. And I don't know what others feel about that, but murals are so predominant and do create such an image for us that if there's any way for us to be engaged prior to the very, very end, I think would be desirable.
I think we added, I guess, we could more clearly define disseminate the information. See in, I want to say it was step two.
It's number four, yeah.
So there is, there is under step one. Corey, you want to read that?
Yeah, so I mean, at pretty much at every level, we're going to communicate the information to the town manager and communication director to share with the board to sort of say, well, maybe just sort of lay out, these are the ideas we sort of talked about. And at any point, you know, the board certainly shared their thoughts on it and.
I guess my concern would be in number four, it's even saying that before it comes back to us though, that revisions could be made, requested of the artist to make. An artist having to do revisions can be very tedious and very time-consuming and I'm almost thinking it would be better for us to see the first, second, and third renderings before any suggestions were made for the artist to make. Or maybe I read that wrong, but it looks like the three renderings will go to the Parks and Rec Board. They can propose changes and then once a consensus is made, is that artist going to be asked to make the changes before it comes to us?
Ideally, we would like to only bring, say it is, two, three versions of the art, but it would be the ways outlined here after any revisions they may in this public meeting. And again, it would be an attempt to have a lot of participation where it is citizens and the advisory committee sort of sharing input on it.
Commissioner DeMinn, let me see if this helps. So under step one, that's the last paragraph, so the two, last two sentences says, "This idea will be forwarded to the town clerk and town manager for dissemination to the board. Communication will send a copy for review for branding." And then under number two, if there's consensus, the last sentence there with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, "The recommended ideas slash concepts from the meeting will be forwarded to the town clerk, town manager for dissemination to the board." So the intent is to get it in y'all's hands.
That's just the idea though. If you read that, they're talking about the idea or the concept.
Yeah.
And I believe it's the actual piece of art, looks like it's not going to come to us until after the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has asked the artist to make revisions. I don't know that that's real fair to artists. I know that's happened and I don't think that's real fair to the artist.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm going to try to move the ball forward on this a little bit. I see this as, and Corey, you said this was an internal document. I interpret that as being an operational procedure, not a legislative one. I don't see us needing to approve this. This is y'all's policy to follow and your procedure to follow. I think at times, you know, designed by committee is going to be a disaster if it keeps coming between us, somebody else, and somebody else. You're going to have so many people involved. After the first artist goes through this, somebody else is going to say, "It was such a pain. Forget it. I don't want to waste my time and go through all the procedures." I would like to see the quote-unquote "page two" document go before the attorney for a revision to make sure it complies with the current law and ruling for the Supreme Court. And if this is Hazen's department or Hazen's town's policy and it's his department head's policy, then so be it if it needs to be tweaked. I think y'all work it out, but I said something to you a minute ago, well, but this is operational. This isn't legislative. We don't need to be approving it.
I do think we wanted to make sure that, you know, you guys were comfortable with it, to see the attempt to engage the public and engage, you know, the board and share the information before the very end. I would say is what it's been before.
And I think the, Mr. Melton, you make a good point here. I think the issue that I have in reading through all of this, it's not clear to me that there's a separation between public input because of the use of public dollars versus the private citizen putting up a mural. And as you read through this, it doesn't differentiate which applies to one and which applies to the other, or if there's anything that needs to be applied to the, to the private sector. So would you like to make a motion to bring this back to us on September 29th or, excuse me, 23rd?
Yes, my motion would include the language that it, that we send quote-unquote "page two" to the town attorney for his review with the manager and department head for compliance with current laws or actions. Other than that, I mean, this is a policy document in my opinion. So that would be the extent of my motion, to have the page two document revisited by the town attorney for current legal compliance.
And you don't desire that to come back to the board?
I would like to see, for the board to see that document and re-adopt a compliant document.
Okay, so would we all want to do that on September 23rd?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, Mr. Miller?
Just the question for clarification, would we also separate the, when public funds are involved or when it's a private property? Would we disseminate those two?
That's what I heard the mayor say, so I think we need to add that language.
That's right.
I would like to reach out to Commissioner DeMinn to make sure we understand where she's coming from. Because the intent is not for y'all to be surprised, not for something to pop up and it's like, now, we don't want to crush the, whatever artistic, you know, whatever efforts, but we don't, you know, we're all in this together, you know?
Yeah.
So for clarity's sake, my motion is for the town attorney to review the current page two document for compliance, bring that back to the board for adoption, and then clearly define a difference between the two documents if you're using town funds or if you're just installing a mural.
Good.
Okay. And Mr. Corey, is that what you seconded? Okay. Mr. Arvin?
Town manager, I guess to sort of piggyback on Commissioner DeMinn's point, what she's trying, trying to interpret this, because I know where she's coming from, if there's some way for this elective board to be involved in the conceptual phase, normally an artist will come together and say, "Here's two or three ideas or concepts." That artist has to have some buy-in on that concept and I think the board needs to illustrate that to that person. It's a high level, but the problem is, like everything, you come to the nth hour, you go through this whole process and I frankly feel that we're like taking this horse and making glue out of it. But anyway, you hate to get to the nth hour and then you get seven opinions about the mural or the sculpture or the painting or whatever it might be and that's not good productive time for an artist. So I think there's going to be trial and error aspect of it, but somehow if everybody's engaged initially, the concept's lifted up, although it may change, you know, sort of like we'll bring back elevations for final approval, so to speak, at least everybody has an idea where it's going because you don't want to get to the nth hour and the board goes, "Oh, that's not at all what we intended or thought about." I mean, this is going to be very, very messy because we're talking about something as a creative process, not a legislative process.
So, clerk?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, I think, given that train of thought, you could cut out the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and have just a shorter chain from staff to the board to the artist and input, public input, if that's the direction the board wanted to go, we are kind of using the current process and then just, I guess, beefing it up and making sure there's checks and balances, but that's option two.
Well, and what you're lending yourself to, and we have only done on rare occasions, is what they call the charrette, where the artist comes, you have a concepting session, you invite the public, you have a 5:30 meeting or whatever, and they literally interact with the artist and talk about it. And when they're done, the artist at least walks away conceptually with a concept and he begins to move that ball forward. It's a little bit more open-ended process, but it's done all the time.
Well, we could do it with the advisory board if you wanted to. It's really whatever the pleasure board is, that's.
Mr. Higginson?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm not in favor of eliminating input from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I think that's what they're, one of the things they're charged to do and I think we should utilize them for that. I would not be in favor of eliminating them from the process personally.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so we'll see this again on September 23rd? Yeah, okay.
Can I make one ask?
Yes.
I will actually be out of town on the 23rd.
Okay.
Is there any way to make it a different meeting?
The problem with the ninth is we've got so much on the agenda with public hearings. I think that's going to make it a long night.
We'll make it happen.
Okay.
I have to, 12th through 22nd of September myself, but I should be able to work on this between then.
Okay, all right. All right.
Did we vote on that?
We haven't voted yet. Okay, we have the motion on the floor, all those in favor, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Corey.
Thanks.
Next item is to consider revitalization, possible revitalization project in advance of 2020 RNC life.
Good evening. Hope everyone is doing well. Thank you again for your time. Again, we're considering multiple projects for the influx of tourism for the RNC next summer and we're asking for some input and guidance on a number of these projects. First project we're looking at is replacing the retaining wall in front of Town Hall. We have an estimated $100,000 to replace the town, or, excuse me, replace the retaining wall with landscaping block wall, possibly adding some other amenities, including plant material and benches or, you know, we'll have to look at some other design. It would also include land acquisition in that price, or at least that's what we're So the second project that we're looking at is replacing the existing town banners that would cost approximately $5,000 to replace one full set of the town banners. Purchase installation of public art, we're estimating approximately $28,000 for the purchase and installation of public art. This is one area that was mentioned, it's right beside public parking and there was also a discussion about perhaps on the town green, in the center of the town green. So improve the aesthetics of gateway signs. Here we're looking at planting native material or native flowers, grasses, and, you know, other flower, other plants and flowers. Approximately $14,000 would be for the four locations where the gateway signs are. Here again, there's another area for aesthetic improvements. This is the intersection of South Trade, Pleasant Plains, and Weddington Road and that would be clearing the bank and then also installing a native wire living wall. It wouldn't be a hardscape, it would be a softscape. And here would just be, again, aesthetic improvements. The estimate there is approximately $15,000. We're also looking at wayfinding signs, assessing the need for and purchase and installation of additional wayfinding signs. We're not sure of a cost on additional wayfinding signs, we'd have to do a little bit more research in that. In addition, we would look at resurfacing the existing wayfinding signs would be about $700 per sign. We're also looking at replacing the downtown pedestrian lighting, replacing the existing acorn fixtures with one of these fixtures, either an open acorn or a traditional. The approximate cost for that is $300,000, we call in this phase one. That's like the downtown central area, then we could look at additional areas if you wanted to start moving out to different areas outside of the downtown corridor. It was estimated that the carbon footprint would be reduced by approximately 33 tons per year. Here we're talking about in front of Town Hall, right beside the columns is installing planters, irrigation, and there are some other repairs that would have to be made to support it. That would be approximately $25,000. That would be a planter box on each side of Town Hall. We're also talking about adding additional flower baskets on Trade Street. This would be approximately $25,000 for the installation and purchasing of plants. And then we would also look at requesting additional part-time staff for that. We're also going to look at with this project, possibly in some areas as opposed to baskets, also doing concrete planters. Enhancements to Matthew Station, this would be repairing the asphalt, cracked ceiling, then resurfacing it with the sealant and then restriping the area. That's approximately $150,000. Here's just a summary of the projects and if there's any feedback, I'd like to hear that or if Mr. Mayor, if you would go through and ask for some guidance from the rest of the board and let us know how you'd like us to move.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Mr. Min?
I'd just like to say, there were a couple of times you mentioned native. If we could just maybe change that to non-invasive.
Okay.
As a native myself of this area, some of our native plants are pretty boring. We can't have just native. We can't have just native, but non-invasive, certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Higgin?
I have two comments. How much public art are we going to get for $28,000?
That would be...
One piece, or five pieces, or?
We were estimating that for like a sculpture and a pedestal. I mean, we could certainly, correct. We can certainly change scale and get more, but that's what we were looking at.
And I'd like a little bit more information on the pedestrian lighting LED upgrade, because that seems like a really large chunk of money. What exactly is that going to do for us? Why is that a lot better than what we have now?
Well, currently, and I'm going to go back to that slide, what we have is, in the center, that's the acorn. Right now, that has a lot of uplighting, which is considered light pollution, so we would be going from that, and there's actually a mix in town of different types of lighting. I don't recall what they are. CJ, were they the?
Mercury vapor.
Mercury vapor, yes, thank you. So, we'd be converting all those to an LED. We would see some reduction in cost, well, not really in cost, in energy usage, though. The rates are actually set by pole, you know, by fixture, according to the state. The State Utility Commission sets the rates.
So, I want to borrow a comment that Commissioner Miller made, this wouldn't be that really harsh, like Arctic White-looking light, would it, necessarily?
No, there's a range of lights, and we can select the different, it's like 3,000 to 5,000, and we can get more information on the different types of warmth or coolness of the light, as it's called.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add something to this, too. So, this big, big picture, that globe is not being made anymore.
Correct.
And so, if you go down in front of the nail place, you see a different kind of light, but it's, and it's not the acorn, but it, you know, it's just, it's starting to get kind of weird, I guess, for lack of a better word, and some of the globes are broken. If you look out in front of Town Hall, some of them are crooked, and it's because they're broken, and there's no way to replace them, as I understand it. So, I know $300,000 is a tremendously high number, but I think we just need to explore it as quickly as possible, bring it back to y'all, because there are a lot of these lights around town, it could potentially make a lot of, a lot of difference. The problem is, the estimate is high. That's a lot of money.
And you are correct, the acorn is obsolete, and what Duke does right now is replace with, I think we asked for a traditional, but I don't know if there's, it said it may just be what's on their truck at the time, because one of them was different from some of the others that they have put out, so we would like to have a uniform look. And it would improve the lighting, the LED upgrade would improve lighting, which would help with people coming out downtown and at night and feeling a little bit safer walking around.
Well, given that we haven't really targeted a sum of dollars to spend on this, I think, given that this is 300,000, I'd like to ask us to go back and look at the globes. It seems like you could find something that's got the same base size, and what would it cost to go back and replace all of them so they match? And just switch those out. I mean, that's typically, things like that are a standard size, so...
So, you're talking about keeping the existing?
Well, I'm, the fact the acorn is not made anymore, that's fine, but I'm saying, keep the existing pole and the light and change out the cap.
Okay. This actually doesn't include changing the poles. Changing the poles will be a different cost. It would actually have a one-time additional cost of about 30,000, and it would also actually increase utility costs by about three, three times, if I can look at what I was estimating from my conversations with Duke.
So, it's $300,000 to change the tops out?
For 171 fixtures, yes.
Wow. Been in the wrong business.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I may have to support this as a future CIP item, because we're, we're going to look at changing the caps or the tops retrofitted to the existing poles without powder coating or painting the existing poles, so you're going to have a faded, grungy-looking 20-year-old pole with a bright, shiny new cap on it. If we're going to do this, I think it's something that we need to plan for and do, and I gotta think the voltage is for, because you're running LED lights off now, power over ethernet. These are probably 277-volt lights, there's got to be a switch out we can do to get a rebate or some kind of cost savings. As nice as it would look for any convention or any company coming to town, for that matter, I, I can't spend $300,000 to do it halfway. And I think that's what we would be doing.
Absolutely.
Mayor, can I say something just real quick?
Sure.
Just to address some of the things that were just brought up. One thing to keep in mind is these are leased, so we are actually not allowed to go in and replace them ourselves. It's Duke Energy that does them, and they use specific suppliers. They may be open for us saying, look, if we supply them, will you put them on? I'm not sure that's something we can look at, but they also may say no. They are willing to come back in and paint the poles under the existing maintenance agreement.
As a part of this project?
Just in general, we can ask them to do that anyway, either way.
Well, I think with the broken globes and inconsistencies in colors and whatnot, we need to, we need to go back and dig through that and see how we can make all those consistent at a much lower cost than this, so... So, at this particular point, what is the pleasure of the board to perhaps go through these and give a thumbs up, thumbs down, or do the tiering concept? What do we absolutely want to do? Mr. Melton?
Can we ask for a total of those listed projects minus the item eight?
Eight?
Seven.
Sorry, on the previous slide, it had, that was number eight, I'm sorry. Minus the pedestrian lighting LED upgrade.
375.
Hopefully, I did this right. I'm coming up with 342,000, but that does not include the wayfinding signs either, since we don't have a set cost for that.
375.
Yeah, that's getting back in the range I was thinking for total expenditure, personally. Mr. Man?
I'm sorry.
Oh, are you finished, Mr. Melton?
Well, Commissioner DeMent, go ahead.
Mr. Man?
How many utility lines can be buried for $300,000? None?
Very expensive. We can try to get some numbers for y'all. Prohibitively expensive, in my experience.
Okay.
Mr. Urban?
Well, I mean, we vetted this before this meeting, we're vetting it now. I guess, in the past, we've taken the subject matter like this, Hazen has emailed back to us these items, each commissioner has tiered them in a form or fashion, but you now have more information from us, obviously, but you could also tier it and give us information about the cost. Maybe CJ could put an estimated sort of triage, this could be executed in this timeframe, because there might be some things on here that do not really fit into the timeframe we're talking about with a margin factor, you know, with a safety factor. So, I think we've narrowed it down to the zone of what we're trying to do, but if we could get each board member to kind of just sort of like, this is my first tier, this is my second tier, my third tier, we can all sort of independently do our own math, but we can kind of get that back to you, we'll just, you know, turn it around 24 hours for you, or whatever you need.
Do like a ranking?
Kind of rank it again.
Good idea.
And then, you know, let CJ kind of come back and say, well, it takes three months to implement this, six months to implement this, and so on.
Yeah. Well, CJ, you could put together a Gantt chart for us to show what do we take to do that right?
Fortunately, none of them are reliable, and others, it's going to be just...
Yeah, a bunch of lines, but it'll get the idea across. Any other comments?
I have one. I just feel that the 100,000 for the retaining wall that is currently wood seems extremely high. If we were to do blocks through there and replace the wall, the 100,000 doesn't seem realistic to me. I think there's some savings that could be had in there if we don't have to buy property or get more right away.
Okay. So, my hearing consensus on the board to direct the manager to provide the board of commissioners and the mayor the listing of projects with the funding, and that we place us into three different tiers based upon our individual priorities. Okay?
When would we come back and vote on that, then?
Some of these things we'll need to do quickly. I think that if we could get that information to us of what's compiled, and if it's fairly consistent and whatnot, we could probably come back on the 9th and do that very quickly.
Okay. Okay, we can do that, we can certainly do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is receive information on Pleasant Plains multi-use path. Susan, hurry and save me.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, I hope you have uncomfortable shoes, because I'm going to be walking you through several presentations about pedestrian facilities tonight. That's one smile, two smiles. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. I won't be here all night. On July 22nd, you heard from Dana Sujinki, our transportation planner, about the Pleasant Plains Road multi-use path project, NCDOT project number EB 5779. The direction at the end of that item was to work backwards from notification to CARPO and come back. I love that that was kind of vague, because I am back in place of Dana. As Dana started working through this direction, if you recall, it's because in October, there's going to be a call for projects, for transportation projects, and in which we can ask for funding shortfalls. That was the direction we were headed in July, but as Dana started digging back through this and thinking this project, we discovered several, several things. First and foremost, this was in the fourth quartile, when you all ranked capital projects. That was, that was an eye-opener to us. This segment of roadway has sidewalk on one side of the street, and it's used a lot, it's a very popular route, and we love the idea of having a multi-use path on the other side of the street to accommodate cyclists and provide better mobility, but the biggest issue is there's this big concrete and steel thing in the middle. And this project, in this scope, doesn't address the fact that there is a bottleneck for bicycles, bicyclists and pedestrians at that bridge over 485. So, you would be taking more pedestrian and bike facilities up to a bridge with no good way to get them over the bridge. Currently, there's a three-foot sidewalk, but part of that is covered with guardrail or fencing. The other part of it is up against the travel lane, and in order to fix this big kind of roadblock to good pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, you would add about $5 million to the project, which is already at $2 million, and the DA dollars, the DA grants are 20% local match. So, that'd be now a million dollars added to really make the facility viable and to have good pedestrian and bicycle connectivity down Pleasant Plains Road. You're looking at a lot of betterment costs for NCDOT projects, and a comment was made at the last meeting, like, I don't know, maybe we should back off on this, because we've got a lot, we're seeing ahead, and we're seeing contributing a lot of dollars to NCDOT projects. And Dana and I went back out there and walked it again, and we thought, you know what? Maybe that is the best path forward. Maybe that is the best use of our money, is to do some short-term fixes to the existing facility. There's some ramps that are just pushing the threshold of ADA compliance, go back and fix those ramps, there's some panels that are heaved, fix all that stuff, get a good higher barrier fence, not really a fence, but a rail for the pedestrians who are walking over the bridge, and work with DOT to do some lane shifts to get the vehicles a little bit further away from that three-foot sidewalk to increase the level of comfort over the bridge, because if we tried to squeeze bikes and peds on the, on the other side of the bridge, it just constrains everything across 485, and that's the last thing you want to do to motorists, pedestrians and bicyclists as they're going over an interstate. So, I'm back here before you tonight to say that staff's recommendation is maybe cancel the project. Our investment in the CIP was only $55,000, that's easily rolled back into other projects, and it's not hard to take a project off, that's been funded out of the CIP, especially with these DA dollars, it just goes back into the DA pot, and we might get them over on Samuel that we're going to ask for. So, that's, that's our recommendation tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Higgin?
I don't know, when I, when I read through all this, it seemed like we're throwing the baby out with a, with a bath. I mean, you know, it's definitely needed over there, and it's just because we have this one section of road over the bridge, that we're just going to say, okay, let's punt. Is it possible to perhaps have a crosswalk and move people back across, and so they cross the bridge on one side only? I mean, I hate to eliminate an entire project that's 80% funded by someone else just because of one very small section. I don't think there's that many people riding that you'd have, you know, 100 people in line waiting to cross the bridge. I mean, it would, it would, it's not that, not the case now, but to ignore that side of town that really needs a multi-use path, I'm not sure that I agree with the rationale there.
So, so just as a comment, we don't have the, we don't have any DA money right now.
We have some for engineering and roadway, but it is, it does not cover the engineering costs that were given to us by the design consultants.
Right, so we're estimating $1.7 million of state DA money, and then out of our pocket would be $430,000, that's what we're projecting.
That's right.
And then, and then I think the question is, okay, for that 430, if we get the grant for that 430, what do you get? You get a multi-use path that does have to cross back over to the sidewalk on the other side, then that gets you to a three-foot sidewalk that goes across the bridge.
That does not accommodate bicyclists, so the bicyclists you'd have to dump into the road, because I think, you know, thinking about me riding with my son, I would not go on a three-foot with a drop-off to an interstate, I would have to be in the road with him, so it...
People ride on that sidewalk every day.
Do they?
Oh, yeah. I mean, Chris and I live right nearby, and with, how many, how many homes are in Brightmore? 500? 128? There's a lot of, a lot of people that live there.
I just can't say that that's safe for cyclists, so I would be hesitant. I would want to try and get a bike lane or some, some other wider facility.
I totally agree, but it's being used daily. Almost every time I cross the bridge, there's somebody either walking or riding a bike across on the sidewalk.
It is a very active facility, and we, we can look at strategic places to put crossings from neighborhoods over to the existing sidewalk as well.
Mr. Urban?
We still don't know which way the contractor for 485 is going to start. Is that an accurate statement, or is he starting now from Providence?
We, we don't know which way it's going.
Okay. So, in terms of him starting down towards Providence and working towards us versus vice versa, we don't understand that. I guess the question is, timing of design, the bridge and things of that nature, depending on where, if they start down the Providence side, there may be some latitude and timing aspect of it. I don't say this is a panacea or an answer, but we've talked about floating the bond. 12 months is really a short duration from that aspect of it, but I don't know how it fits into the bigger scheme with NCDOT to make that retrofit take place, so...
Of this bridge?
Yes.
This bridge is not being retrofitted with the project?
At all.
No, we asked the DOT to, to add a retrofit to this bridge in their project, and they politely declined.
So, they're making all the connections to get in and off of it or whatever, and they...
Not to Pleasant Plains.
No. No. Oh, Pleasant Plains.
Weddington.
Oh, Weddington, okay.
So we are committed to a multi-use path. How long? You guys voted to fund that.
Weddington.
Okay.
And this is, it's not to say that we don't ever want a multi-use path out here. We think that maybe a better time would be once our capital dollars are programmed for the committed projects that the state is building. And we have now that corner parcel of Wedding, of McKee and Pleasant Plains. When we develop the park at that time, would be a great time to then extend the multi-use path and hopefully try and work with the DOT at that time to do some bridge modifications. Can lever.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Susan, you're exactly right. You're exactly right, Susan. There are sidewalk panels that are coming up, and they need to be ground or replaced. There's areas between Ashley Creek and Brightmore that are washing out from underneath the sidewalk. To improve that, bring it up from sort of ADA, ADA compliance to ADA compliant. Repair the sidewalk. Do what needs to be done to improve it. How much money do you need?
I think that could be absorbed into our regular budget. We would do it with our own forces, because we're allowed to go out and do maintenance on those sidewalks, because we do maintain the sidewalks on NCDOT streets. So we would just add that to our list of repairs, and that would be absorbed into our operating budget.
Is there a timeline that we could potentially anticipate?
I don't know. How far out are they scheduled? Do you know how far out they're scheduling? It's usually around three, three months is when we can expect. We've put in a work order, and three months later, they might get to it. I'm not, I am currently not sure what the sidewalk crew is operating at right now.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Melton, what is your, what are you thinking there?
I'd like to come back and see an estimate put together. It's not something I don't think we can do for 50 or 60, $70,000. I'd like an assessment of the sidewalk to be done before we completely do away with one project and adopt it. I wouldn't want it to be spot-checked and done under a work order. I would like it, like it potentially be a project. So I'd like to defer this one until we could get some more information about what can be done on the existing sidewalk and a better idea of how much money it would cost us.
Okay. Well, in this particular case... So you don't feel like the, the multi-use path, EB5779, is adequate? Or are you saying that you want to just look at what we have?
Well, I agree, and I respectfully disagree with our mayor, Pro Tem. I wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable walking across that bridge, across the interstate. I mean, it's, I look at some of the children on tricycles or on training wheels, and everybody's white-knuckling it across. I, I agree that maybe this is the wrong thing to do. But before we adopt and give direction on making repairs on the existing sidewalk, I'd like to have further assessment done. But I, I agree with, with the engineer, with Susan. This may not be the best, this project may not be such a good idea anymore.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that we abandon the current project EB5779 and ask the town manager to direct staff to further assess the existing sidewalk needed repairs and a potential budget.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is, are there any discussion? Okay, seen none. We taking that to which meeting date? September 23rd?
How long do you need, Susan?
We can do that.
September 23rd.
September.
Okay. All right. Is that okay with you and Jeff on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
No, we got in opposition.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Higdon, I'm sorry. Okay, so the motion carries with Mayor and Commissioners voting in favor. Dement, Urban, Query, Melton and Miller, and Mayor Pro Tem Higdon voting in opposition. Okay. Next item on the agenda is received draft plan for intersection improvements at Matthews Street Station and North Trade Street.
Yes, that's it, thank you. All right. Hello again. I just want to remind you why we're here tonight. This is the, for this item, North Trade Street and Matthews Station Street. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. And it's, it's because there's no really easy answer to the idea that, you know, how do we make things safer? Safer is a, safe is a feeling that people have, and safe is something that we always strive for. And as I put in my memo, the goal of what we're doing here tonight is to improve the existing pedestrian crossings at North Trade Street, at Matthews Station Street. And also, there was a 2018 planning conference item to discuss a plan to combine driveway access to closed driveway entrance in front of Breckman's to improve pedestrian crossing. And so I begged for some survey money to help with that, especially that piece in particular. And we were able to hire a very talented firm, Alta Planning and Design, who will be presenting tonight their solution. This is a planning and design firm that has a lot of experience in this type of work. And I hope that you've reviewed their renderings, but they'll be showing them on the big screen for your enjoyment tonight. We posed several challenges to the design team, including investigating combining the driveway, but also to not preclude future recommendations that are going to come out of another group from Alta that is working on our downtown mobility study. Can you go to the next? Do we have a clicker? Thank you. Wade Walker, you've heard from him before at the mobility study or plan when they did the charrette. And we also have with us tonight from Alta, Juan Morales, a talented designer that is with Alta that was assigned to this project. And they are going to take it from here.
Thank you. Great to be back in Matthews and taking a look at this intersection for you. We were presented with several design challenges at this intersection. It's not a particularly pedestrian-friendly intersection to cross right now. Intersection there at Matthews Station and North Trade Street. Several things are at play here. One being the steep driveway grade coming out of the businesses and Breckman's in particular. Excuse me. To say that it's an impactful grade. I have impacted my own car in coming out of there, as I'm sure the scrape marks indicate that several people have. So looking at a way to rectify that, that steep grade was one part. The other thing that's happening at that location currently, that pedestrian crossing terminates into the driveway, which is not ADA compliant. So we really needed to take a look at that as well. At Matthews Station, there was no marked crossing currently. Also, the, where the pedestrians are located at the existing crosswalk, where the pedestrians are located closer to Town Hall is set back behind the on-street parking. So they're not necessarily visible to drivers in the travel lanes. If cars are parked, they can, they may not actually be able to see them there as well. While the decorative lighting is really attractive and in context with downtown, in this location, it's probably, it's not sufficient for pedestrian activity. And then also exacerbating the, exacerbated by the pedestrians being set so far back, it causes a really long distance to cross at that location. So our proposed solution would be to add in all the elements of pedestrian safety that are consistent with a completed raised intersection, so that the entire intersection...